Give them another minute. Or two.
He's on track.
That sounds ominous. The, um, so the big deal we're working on right now would be the, um, the capital approval budget. And so what we saw the last week was just a very broad open to what they want. He's going to give you a pretty intensive thing, you know, but they need to.
You say that, I could.
And that's going to be important because your role will be, you know, you see this for parks and rec. Your role will be to advocate for the budget that you guys want.
And.
Maybe sit down with a six-year-old female and.
You know, it's, well, it's. Bobby and Allison, they were dating, but now they're not dating, no, because Allison's now started going out with John. It's like, this is cute, I'm like, I'm like.
Twenty-six?
Yeah, she, yeah, she's, I keep trying to keep all the gossip.
You can keep that going. Alrighty, I think we are ready to begin our deliberations for the evening. The planning commission will be in order. Now, before we get into the meat of our meeting, I think Ms. Redker would like to make a statement.
Yes, hello. I just want. Hello. Hi. I just wanted to make a quick statement. I spoke at the public hearing at the B A R last Tuesday about something having to do with zoning adjacent to the West Haven neighborhood. And I said it was the city's fault. And I saw that come back in an article and I was like, I don't, hopefully, no one that works at the city. I think everyone does an amazing job. It was more of the whole, like, the whole umbrella of the systems and how maybe we need to protect certain corridors and places where people need to travel. So I just want to apologize. I didn't mean anyone at the city personally who were very grateful get to work there. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
He's at N D S.
Oh.
I will, I will alert him that he does not need to be at N D S.
Right, hey, the next thing on our docket is the special exception. And it looks like this special exception is going to be managed tonight by, by Mr. Alfie. And there are three things that we are looking at. One is the front set pack. The other is a screening. And then the other are the large trees that are, that are, um, that are in question. So, Mr. Alfie, would you lead us through the special exception permit request?
Yes, Chair. Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Matt Alford. We're the planning ministers at N D S. I'll be presenting items tonight. Ben Coe, the planner, assigned the projects currently on vacation. So, next slide. Tonight, you're being asked to review a special exception permit.
Thought I could hear myself. Alright, hopefully that's better. Tonight, you're going to be asked to review a special exception permit located at eleven fourteen East High Street to make a recommendation to City Council. The applicant, Mr. Mike Ball of Element Constructions, is proposing to construct a small workshop behind the primary business structure that's on East High. This workshop will be used for cabinet fabrication and related activities in support of the design-build business. On March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission reviewed the original application, which requested relief from the Build Two requirements due to the non-conforming nature of the existing structure that's on East High Street. At that time, the commission recommended approval and City Council granted the special exception on April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Next slide. During the development review process, it was determined that the proposed location of the workshop does not comply with the transition screening requirements outlined in section thirty-four, four, seven, one, C of the zoning ordinance. Specifically, when a CX five zoning property of Butson R one zone district, a type C transition screen is required. This includes a twenty-foot building setback and moderate screening. Next slide. In addition to the previously approved relief from the Build Two requirements, the applicant is now requesting modifications to the transition screening standards. These include reducing the required building setback from twenty feet to five feet, decreasing the screening depth from eight feet to five feet, and requesting exemption from the planting requirements within that five feet. The applicant proposes to utilize the existing fence between the CX five and the R A properties to satisfy screening requirements. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the conditions outlined on page ten of the staff report. Next slide. However, staff recommends, and the applicant, staff and the applicant recommend, would, however, staff and the applicant would like commission to consider one modification to condition D, which is currently stated that the workshop shall not exceed a height of fourteen feet, five inches. Based on refinements to the construction drawings, we recommend this, this be amended to allow maximum height of sixteen feet. Next slide. And next slide. Alright, this concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Additionally, the applicant is here to answer any questions or provide a brief presentation.
Would the applicant like to, you guys want to go ahead and talk to Matt first? Great, go ahead.
Was that sixteen feet, was that about, uh, part D there?
Uh, part D, yes, from going from fourteen, putting the condition from fourteen and a half to sixteen.
Okay, any other questions for Matt? Would the applicant like, do you speak?
Thanks for having me. I had all the feeling to.
Any questions for the applicant? Yes?
Do you have any concerns with the conditions recommended by the staff?
I don't, no. Thank you.
So Carl, what do we think?
Well, it's not in a, in an A D C, so, no, I mean, we already looked at the front setback, so I think we can ignore that. And as far as the neighbor seems to be okay with this, so, um, I mean, a sixteen-foot wall, blank wall is kind of a lot, but it's, it's not in the room. The neighbor's okay, so I'm okay.
So, I mean, it seems to me there's two things that trigger the transition requirements, right? There's use and there's size. It seems to me that these conditions are, are pretty focused on the size, which isn't really what's, what's causing the actual transition requirement to hit here, right? You know, the height limitation, I don't see as necessary because the height is not what is triggering the, the transition requirement. You know, that said, I, I guess, you know, the application sort of took a tone of it's absurd that this requirement exists. And it's, it's really not clear to me at all that a transition requirement to separate an industrial use from your, your low-density residential use is all that ridiculous that there are potentially real externalities associated with an industrial use. And, you know, I, I think I would have questions for the applicant on what those impacts might be. You know, in particular for carpentry use, I'd imagine there's some noise generated. And I wonder, yeah, I just feel like, you know, this, the report here and the application were very focused on, well, it doesn't make sense to have a fifty-foot setback on a fifty-foot lot. I totally agree with that. But, you know, and maybe these concerns are reduced because the current neighbor is okay with it. But, you know, what are the impacts from this use here? And are these conditions properly mitigating those?
Would you like the applicant to answer?
Uh, yeah, I would.
I'm not sure exactly what I said that made it sound like I said. It may have been I read it and read, so I might say something.
Thank you. I, I think the absurdity was mostly coming from zoning not knowing about this requirement. Having spoken with zoning prior to purchasing the property, purchasing the property based on zoning's feedback, talking to zoning about it, saying, hey, apparently there's a twenty-foot setback that I didn't see. Can you clarify for me? And they said, no, there's no twenty-foot setback here. And then we had to kind of look into it together. It's, the zoning is not written well. The transition type on there, it's hard to follow. It brings you to a link, it brings you to another page, brings you to a chart that if you look at it the wrong way, which is very easy to do, it tells you that there is no setback. So, the whole thing needs to be clarified. It's very confusing. You know, most properties in Charlottesville seem to be non-conforming right now. There, there's just a lot of work that still needs to be done and we're in a very confusing state of, I mean, and I'm seeing it a lot in building.
So, I mean, sure, most properties are non-conforming, has to build two requirements. But I guess that didn't really address, my question is, my question is, what do you feel that the external impacts of the use you're proposing here are? You know, are there, is there going to be noise audible from the property line on the R A side as a result of your use? And if so, what hours would they be?
Yes, there will be noise. That noise wouldn't be any different with the twenty-foot setback versus the five-foot setback. The, are you looking that up?
I mean, scrolling to where that is, but it wouldn't be any different at the property line?
I mean, fifteen feet, I mean, from, you know, running a saw from here to right there doesn't really make a difference in decibels.
Okay.
Five foot off versus twenty foot off. The sounds, the sound, without a barrier, the sound's going to travel just as much in that distance. We are going to have the block wall, it's going to be well insulated. We don't have a lot of finestration on it on purpose for this reason. We have windows out the front side that, you know, those are the only ones out the shop side. And those are going to our parking lot. We own the building next door, so, we own the whole parking lot, so that only affects us. But coming out the backside, I don't think there's going to be any difference. So, that's my honest answer there. But we would be using this, it, it's, I mean, we're going through the whole major development plan for a building that's basically a large shed. It's going to have some tool used every once in a while. It's, a lot of it's just going to be storage. We're going to have a few people in it a few times a month.
Okay, so you're going to talk about like daily.
No, we're not doing major cap, we're doing some built, for example, I've had two guys in my shop one and a half days this week, building a specialty gate. So, they've run a bandsaw maybe for five minutes of that. They've, you know, used a chop saw a few times, a lot of it's just screwing, measuring, cutting by hand, specialty cuts. So, that's the type of work we're doing. We're not doing major cabinetry work or anything like that.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
I don't have anything sort of specifically for the applicant.
Do you have some putts?
Well, I, I eyeballed this today. I think the difference in height of the building is, it doesn't really come into play because the real, the neighbor on which one is impinging is one-one-one-nine Meriwether, which is on a very steep lot. The house itself is down the hill. And then we've got, is that a five-foot or a six-foot privacy fence there?
Six-foot fence.
Yeah, it looked like a six-foot fence to me, a six-foot privacy fence there. I don't think from a window in the, in the back of that house that you're going to be able to see this building at all just because of the geometry. So, I'm not really concerned about that. And then, so I'm, I'm, and in this case, because we have an extant privacy fence, which has been incorporated, sort of what we need in the buffer there to me becomes a much sort of fuzzier question to answer. Because I'm not sure what additional benefit in terms of, the fence is opaque, the, any shrubbery is going to have a negligible sound barrier. What you're really sort of glad for is that six-foot fence. So, my inclination is this is exactly what we have exceptions for because if you look at it, you eyeball it and you say this doesn't need a typical transition at all. It's very apt, it's an appropriate use of the, of the.
The feedback from the neighbor is he's just glad it's not a five-story building.
Well, like the one on the one side of him, which is, the apartment building, which is, yes.
That's right.
That's the other thing, we gotta, you know, it's, we already have a looming building right there. This is not, if even if we're taller, this isn't the time to.
It's not the height of the building, again, that's triggering the transition requirement, right? He could build a five-story building with, well, that's not true. He could build a three-story building with no transition requirement at all.
Which, in which case, I'd be very, very interested to see what we're planting back there.
Someone explain that to me, because I thought you needed, I thought you need it no matter what, just because it's a.
If it's allowed in the adjacent, in the adjacent zone, you can build it.
Okay. I was wondering where that was hidden in there.
Yeah. Yeah, but, but to me, the transition really is being driven by that fence right now. Is that yours or does it belong to the neighbor?
That's his, but we agree that if it ever comes down, then I have to build one.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Soliates, what would we like to do with this?
I believe I have a motion.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
I stated, I believe I have a motion. I propose that we recommend approval with the conditions recommended by staff, except for, and section D to read, the studio workshop shall not exceed sixteen feet in height as recommended by staff.
Can we talk?
Where the distinction is, at one story, however tall the story is, or however tall the roof is, like, if it's twenty feet tall, it's not changing anything about the impact of the neighboring property. But at one story, the source of the sound, the equipment that's making the sound, is all on the ground floor. And to me, that's much more, it's much more germane to the actual impact we're supposed to be mitigating here, whereas limiting the height of the roof.
So, how would you modify D?
That the, the structure should be limited to one story. Above ground in height.
That work?
Yes, that's, that works, got it.
So, the modification would be that the height would be limited to one story? Is that the motion?
That is the revised motion at this time, yes.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Creasy?
Mr. Soliates?
Hi.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Stolzemberg?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Duranzio?
Yes.
Ms. Oker?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell?
And I. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our docket is the, our recommendation to council regarding some legislations we'd like. Mr. Duranzio and Mr. Soliates have put a bit of effort into this. If you take a look at it, they've got about fourteen things that they'd like to chat with us about. The, the, the last six, I believe, are all old stuff. We've already had these in the docket before, I mean, in the, in our recommendation before.
Yes, that's correct.
So, we can, we can go through those again if you like, but we probably ought to begin with spending a lot of time on items one through five, which are new recommendations. And with that, I'm going to toss the ball to the folks who put this together. And at the end of that, we'd also like to defer to Mr. Duranzio to talk about one other item that he'd like us to consider. So, which one of you guys is going to take the lead?
I think I could take it if you don't mind.
No, I, well, particularly for the first one. Right, go ahead, yes, sir.
The more recent content was inspired by the work of the last year. So, I hope you will recognize the origin of all of this. Number one was regarding an issue about having to submit every rezoning proposal for review by the Virginia Department of Transportation. Even though they do not manage city streets, we believe it would be helpful to have a clear exemption for cities. To be absolutely clear, that section does not apply.
Yeah, apropos to nothing whatsoever.
I take some issue with the phrasing. We do not have to submit every rezoning proposal under the law as written, as you may have seen in the news. I, I would say a better phrasing would be something about clarifying the requirements of twenty-two, twenty-two dot one as it pertains to comprehensive rezonings. And if determined that it should be applicable to those to direct V dot to promulgate standards for review, that makes sense for comprehensive resumex.
Was it? Could you, could you give that to me again? That was very confusing to me.
That was nice.
And maybe if you can use some words that, Ms. Creasy can.
Before you restate that, at present, V dot won't step in even if asked?
At present, V dot promulgates regulations that say the standard for whether it substantially affects transportation on state-controlled highways for a city that maintains its own roads is generating more than five thousand trips per day for lots within, for, for proposals with the nearest lot line within three thousand feet of a state-controlled highway measured along local roads. Wait, let me back up. What I propose is that we direct the city attorney to craft a recommendation for the general assembly to clarify twenty-two, twenty-two dot one.
I came tonight because this is actually something that, as you can imagine, is under consideration by us legislative change being one of the pathways we're taking to resolve some of the issues we've had around our, our rezoning. So, there's a number of different tacks that we can take. I've drafted some language that ultimately will be up to the city council to decide which path they want to take. But also possibly some of our other partners in this kind of effort around the state and with some of the various organizations. What I've, I've got kicking around in my head right now is the idea to actually remove, if any locality failure to comply with the statute or failure to comply with, in any, or impartially comply with it, will not serve as grounds to void a, a rezoning or a comprehensive rezoning or any action taken by the local government. Basically saying this is a directory type of regulation or law rather than a mandatory thing. So, there's a couple of different considerations. We were, we're on it, so your recommendation, I would like to keep it more general, if possible, because it'll make my life easier.
So, for the record, last year, we, we kind of deferred on this item because we did not want to, to step in and provide any noise attention of positive or negatively in that whole direction while we had this ongoing matter. We didn't want to muddy any waters. I think that still applies now that if we're going to do something, obviously, you're going to have to drive that bus to make sure it's the least, well, I can't really have a bus in a river muddying waters, but you get my point.
I think last year, we were advised by council to, not council, but council, to stay out of it.
Right.
And I, I think I'm happy, I think it would be appropriate for us to endorse the city attorney's efforts without prescribing language.
Yes, right, I agree.
I appreciate the support.
Are you okay with your, the statement that you made, direct city attorney to craft a recommendation to clarify the language in fifteen point two, 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 one, part B?
Yeah, well, except that, I guess it sounds like you're getting, so maybe just endorse his.
I would say maybe not clarify, because we're not, I understand what it means. I, I would say to actually.
Review and revise, review and propose revisions.
Improve.
Improve.
Yes, to make modifications to that particular statute with respect to its effect on rezonings initiated by the locality.
Would you read that back to Ms. Creasy?
I have an attempt.
Okay, I got it. Sorry, I was getting the last part, which y'all might get rid of anyway. Direct city attorney to craft a recommendation to make modifications to the language at fifteen point two, 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 one, part B pertaining to rezonings proposed by the locality.
That, that's more than sufficient.
Do we have consensus? Yes, okay, number two. Yes, okay, number two.
We're gonna move on each of these, or are we just gonna do-
Um, yeah, let's, let's, let's talk about them at a high level. We're gonna, we may not have to go through all of six through 14, but the new ones are short.
Do you want to take number two, Phil, or shall I?
Uh... No, I think it's self-explanatory. I'll do it, recommend that in order to expedite development review, 15-22286, that three be amended to give the governing body the power to delegate the power to approve special exceptions to the planning commission. This on the grounds that if we're going to have as arcane, as it has been admitted, some matters in the zoning code, that the expertise that resides in the planning commission, the city council ought to be able to say, you do it, instead of having them reinvent the wheel, particularly on highly technical matters like that.
Many is shadani. What do you got?
Yeah, I guess, is, so would this basically mean that a special exception works similar to, you know, a BAR finding of, like, a COA, in that, you know, we, we, we grant, or we deny a special exception, then they can appeal to council?
Right. It would be an appellate, instead of council making the decision on every one, just to, yeah. Because again, council is not going to do the dive that we did.
Yeah. I think that makes sense. Do you, do you happen to know if council is interested in delegating this to us?
We're asking.
Okay. We're just, we don't know if they're going to, but we were gonna ask.
Might be my guesses.
I can say that the Almeral County Board of Supervisors used to be interested in delegating slope authority to their planning commission, which led to the famous case, Sinclair v. Singular, which basically threw out all of that delegation, and said it was, it was not in accord with the Dillon Rule. I, I think my comment would be that there's probably, that this is, this would be a very significant change that overturns a decade and a half of a fair amount of, like, stuff. And I, I don't necessarily oppose it, but I don't know if we've fully thought through the implications.
Well, I mean, we're, we'll leave it to council to say yes or no. We can litigate it then.
Sure. And the General Assembly, yeah.
Right, the concerns. All right, number three.
Number three. We recommend that in order to expedite development reviews, a similar concept, 15-22286 dot four, this is just the next section, be amended to allow the given, quote, hardship standard to be replaced by guidelines approved by the local governing body to set parameters for modifications of the zoning ordinance as required. If council wants to set a standard, they are permitted to it. Everything does not have to be a hardship standard.
Same comments.
Yeah, well, I guess this also is, this really is married to four, which is-
Is it?
Yeah, which is, we need to clear hardship and harm, you need to clarify what those mean. Because that, that-
Same basic idea.
Wow. How would I argue harm for standing and hardship for a fair answer are pretty different concepts?
Yeah, they are, but it's the same idea of how, of making definitional changes and being able to figure out what the guidelines are in each case.
I'm fine with it. Concept. Wait, I'm sorry, was that three or four?
No, it was three and four.
That was three and four.
They are linked, it's true.
Three and four.
They're related, well, yeah, parts of them.
Three is they're linked, but okay, I'm fine with that.
Number five.
We recommend that, again, asking the state legislature, allow all localities the option of enacting a one-cent sales tax. This is very, very similar to what we did last year.
I think my comment is probably the same as last year, which is, council's already going to ask for this, and why is this us asking council to do this? But it's fine, because they're going to do it anyway.
So six through 14 are repeats. Do we want to go through each one, or do you guess?
Did we have the thing in six about the rest of TJPDC last year?
I think that's the difference.
I don't know that I necessarily feel the need to be asking on behalf of our partner localities. That said, it's just authorization, and they have no obligation to do anything with that authority. So I, I don't care. I don't know why I'm even talking.
Any objections to number six? All right, do we want to talk about seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14? Or again? I had, Ms. Creasy helped me understand the state school streets thing. I didn't remember what that was. Once I read the stuff she says, I did. Anybody else have any?
I think on seven, I have the same comment as last year, that 20% is quite high, and we don't fully understand the implications of that, but I'm sure I'll be outvoted on that. My other comment would be on 13, I would use the North Carolina example, that the North Carolina passed a bill like the one we're asking for, not just Memphis.
I meant to ask about that. I, I guess I looked it up last year, the last time we talked about this, and it didn't look like it actually existed in Memphis, like they tried to pass it and it failed or something.
Yeah, it looks like it's been rescinded or changed. Yeah, I felt the same issue.
So if there is an actual working example-
Well, no. North Carolina, they passed a bill instructing that, the, you know, DHCD equivalent, or whatever, create a committee that, with the direction of creating the regulations to implement the law, because they didn't want to, like, write the whole code in the law. And that committee has taken quite a long time, and is still working on it, because it turns out to be non-revealed.
Right, and doesn't mean anything. Engaged to be engaged, got it.
Well, they're directed to do it.
Right.
I guess, I mean, I'm okay with somebody studying this, but I still think there are, this has a lot of implications that may be negative.
Do, for example? And I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, I just, there's, the residential code is a lot more lax, so it's, you know, the gross requirements and fire rating requirements and sprinkler requirements.
Council didn't do anything with this last year. Why? Is it because of the confusion we're having today, or? I mean, what do you got? Or do you want to resubmit it, or do you want to modify it, or delete?
Not convinced the council reads this memo at all, while making their legislative agenda.
I'm okay with this being in there, but it's, again, it's the idea that, I'm assuming somebody's going to study it, like, it's not going to be like, state legislator changed the code for us. It's, somebody set up some process to figure it out.
Okay, so we're leaving it in?
I would be comfortable with changing it to study.
All right, repeat that.
Instead of adjusting, study?
Yeah, instead of adjusting, change it to study.
The other side to that is, of course, even if we say adjusting or not, they're going to study.
I promise.
Yeah.
Would you, would you repeat it so that Ms. Creasy can capture what you're, what you're asking for?
We recommend studying the adjustment of the state building code to treat six units and below, et cetera.
Okay. The only other one that was in question, that I think we're all right with, that was number seven. Rory had some heartburn. Rory, what was your heartburn again? On number seven?
Requiring, doubling the tree penalty requirement on parcels, even on dense urban lots, even on, say, the downtown mall, where you would expect the trees to be in the right of way.
So you don't-
But this is, of course, only authority to do that. That will inevitably be used in the most restrictive and anti-hastic way.
So are we leaving that in, is it?
Yeah.
It's okay, the General Assembly won't do it.
Yes, there is that, right.
All right, Mr. Duranzio, you have something for us?
So, yeah, so I, and I apologize for 11th-houring this. I don't know if anybody got a chance to read that statute.
I read your email.
Yes, I read your email.
All right, so the statute is one page, it's not, it's not-
Can you kind of walk us through the email first? Because I scanned it, but I didn't read it.
So, my email proposes making some revisions to 15-2-319, which is about subordinate mortgages and the subordination of mortgages. And this is applicable, and I'll sort of back this up. So let's say you have a mortgage on your house, and you get a home equity line of credit, and you go about your business, and you improve your, whatever you do with the home equity line of credit, I don't care. And at some point, it becomes clear that refinancing your first mortgage is, since you bought your house in the last three years, rates have dropped, and it makes a great deal of sense to refinance. When you pay off a mortgage, even for one second, any subordinate lien takes priority. So the second you pay off that mortgage, your HELOC is now the primary mortgage. The problem with that is, is that the new mortgage company is not going to like that and permit that. So in many circumstances, you have to go to the bank that gave you the HELOC and say, "Pretty please, will you allow me to refinance my house?" And this opens the door for that entity to relitigate, re-underwrite you, and start making decisions about your original mortgage. And it takes forever. And there's no way to tell whether you're dealing with a great actor as the subordinating body, or a terrible one, until you realize it's taken you three weeks to find the right person on the phone to do it. So this law was put in place to, to make that easier. And what it said was, is that if your new mortgage is no more than $5,000 greater in principal balance than at the moment you refinance, and it's a lower rate, and you're a single-family resident, and it's, the deed of trust is recorded with the old, with the old notes information, and originally, your balance is no more than $50,000, it'll automatically happen. A few years ago, I went to the state and got them to clean up a couple of things, and we pushed through jumping that to 150,000. The changes that I'm proposing to make are designed to make it easier, particularly in a denser housing environment, to get this automatic subordination. So the idea would be, we would make it apply to any primary residence, because it specifically says, specific, single-family residence. That has caused problems with things with accessories. Oh, it's not a single, single family. All right. If we've got four units on a lot, we're going to have a lot of situations, presumably, in the, in the future, of duplexes that are owner-occupied. I'm already seeing that upticking in my activities, for example. So one, we want to include everybody. Secondly, we need to adjust the amount of the principal increase from 5,000 to 10,000, because that was designed to roll in your closing costs, and they're up. And secondly, move the thing to 250,000 or 300,000, because in places like Northern Virginia and Charlottesville, getting very, getting larger HELOCs with larger equity pieces is very common. So the idea here particularly is, if you bought a house in the last, you know, there are a whole bunch of people who bought houses five years ago, got HELOCs, and they're never going to refinance their first mortgage, because their rate's at 2.875. So, you know, you're going to have to drag them out of there in a box. They're not selling that house, they're not refinancing that house. Then, but in the last two or three years, you've got people at 7% who bought houses, and if you wanted to fix your house up, or put an accessory in it with a HELOC, now's the opportunity to refinance. So I'm trying to modernize it and put a cast on it of, this is good for people who are doing good with their HELOCs. It is not exactly in our wheelhouse. I will, I intend, my colleague and I, who did this 15 years ago, will scrap together some language for it. We also want to put in a point about switching from an adjustable rate to a fixed.
But your objection is to make this recommendation and package it in with these, isn't it?
Uh, I can.
Can we just say, modernize and expand to allow accessory units, or accessory units and duplexes?
Well, I'm going to rewrite that, I'm going to put together those language.
And then you can give language to a legislator, or the Realtors Association, to push?
Or the bank, or the Community Bankers Association, or the Mortgage Bankers Association, who are, yeah.
I imagine one of those is who pushed it the first time, right?
Uh, the Central Virginia Mortgage Professionals did that, of which I was the president.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I'd point out that in 2011, 150,000 is when it was last raised. That's 216,000 now, just by regular inflation, not even house-
Yeah, not even housing, 250 to 300, exactly. And that's a good place to stop, too, because most HELOCs treatment gets different at your bank at 250 or 300. They start being-
So are we interested in making this recommendation? I think we are. So, in a soundbite that Ms. Creasy can capture, and you can come back and clean it up later, could you, could you walk Ms. Creasy through, I've already had a pretty good soundbite, but you probably want it to be a little thicker than Rory's?
Yeah, so, let's see, recommend the revision of 55 dot 2 dash 319 to expand its applicability in primary residences, and update process and figures to meet real-world conditions, something like that.
Let me give Ms. Creasy a moment to digest.
Okay, something like that. And I'll mark up the statute with the precise changes I want to make and spam it out.
I got a little bit lost at the end. Of course, we can always go back to the date.
I have "and figures to meet real-world conditions."
Okay. Figures to meet today's timeframes, or?
I didn't have today's.
Present day.
Yeah. Current.
Current.
Yeah, and there is one technical problem that needs to be changed, too, that no matter what, I'm going to convince somebody to change it, because it's just dumb, but that has nothing to do with us.
All right, recommend revision to the code section 55.1, by the way.
Oh, 55.1, yeah. It used to be 60, 6.2 dash chapter 16 something, which is when I originally did it, so, sorry.
You know, these things change.
These things change.
Right.
Recommend revision to the code section to expand its applicability for primary residents and update figures to meet current timeframes.
Figures and processes.
And processes, okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Is-
So we pass this, sorry. We'll end up passing this on by the end of this week. I don't think that, I'll find out when that group is meeting, so if you have, for your markup version, it sounds like another group may take it on anyway, but-
Right. No, I'll get, I'll, I'll mark it up and, and get it to you. It's not, it ain't, it ain't a lot. I've, I've done it before.
I got you.
All right, is there any other business, or any other announcements? The reminder that the annual meeting is in September, and Mr. Stolzenberg and Ms. Redger are managing the, managing the nominations, so if you have any interest in anything, let them know. Ms. Creasy, is there anything else?
Those are the only items we have scheduled this evening.
Mr. Duranzio?
You know, there's a lot I could have done. The certification of the 19th Amendment, Krakatoa got, made its major detonation in 1883, destroying the entire built environment of that island. But I'd rather say that, just point out that every dog has its day, and today is that day. Today is National Dog Day. So for those of you who celebrate, let's adjourn and go do that.
We are, we are adjourned.